Good evening and welcome to the Livonia City Council. The Honorable Councilmember Kathy White will lead us in a prayer. Will you all rise?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, please guide us tonight as we make decisions on behalf of the residents of the city. Help every man, woman, and child in our community to always know your everlasting love and infinite mercy. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman White. We'd like to welcome you to the 1,874th meeting, regular meeting that is, of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes from this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting, which is scheduled to be held on Monday, June the 17th of this year. Will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Meakin?
Here.
Vice President Jolly?
Present.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
President Toy?
Here. Councilman Kritzman won't be with us possibly for this meeting, possibly the next. Okay, with that, do I have presentation of the 1,873rd meeting, which was a regular meeting that was held on Monday, May the 20th? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to move approval of the minutes.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman McIntyre, is there support for those minutes?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jolly has supported. Would the clerk take the role on the minutes?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Present.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Toy?
Yes. Counsel, we do have a special presentation. Is Livonia Youth Symphony Orchestra here? All right, good, there they are. And if you would hand that to Councilman Barr. Councilman Barr, would you help us with that this evening?
I'd be happy to. We have a commendation from the mayor and city council for Livonia Symphony Orchestra in recognition of their 60th year of enhancing the artistic quality of our community with performances of a spring and winter concert, and they're also one of the oldest youth orchestras in the state of Michigan. So, on that occasion, we've got a certificate here signed by Mayor Dennis Wright and from the council, and we're glad that you're here. If you want to step up here, we'll hand this to you, and we can all give you guys the acknowledgement that you deserve.
Come on up. Come on up. And if somebody would like to say anything at the microphone there, please help yourself. Come on, it's been 60 years.
Thank you for this presentation of this award. We're coming into our 60th, the proper 60th year here. We invite you all to the concerts. We'll make sure you all have tickets. Okay, we do this for the kids, and we're building the program larger every year and continuing to promote the arts here in Livonia.
We appreciate all your hard work. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in this evening, Counsel. Anybody would like to make comment? Yes, Councilwoman McIntyre?
Congratulations. Very much appreciate the tickets that you sent each of us for the last concert. Unfortunately, I think it fell on the same day as the Livonia Civic Chorus Concert, and I already had a prior commitment to that, so I'm sorry I couldn't attend, but your outreach and engagement with us and the community is very much appreciated. So, thank you, congratulations.
Yes, I'd like to ditto that. Thank you for all the tickets you've sent us. I was over at Madonna University breaking ground for one of their new buildings in the absence of our mayor at that point. So, thank you very, very much for all that you do for our city and our youth especially. That's so very worthwhile. We appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. Anyone else wanting to make a personal announcement and/or tribute or recognition? Councilwoman McIntyre, then Counsel.
Thank you, Madam President. This past Memorial Day weekend, we had our annual Memorial Day presentation at the Veterans Park. This was kind of a special occasion for Brigadier General Miles Davis, who was a Bentley grad. He's being transferred out of Livonia to Fort Bragg, so he won't be able to emcee our event anymore. I wanted to thank President Toy for stepping in in replacement of Mayor Wright, who wasn't able to partake in the activities. It was a wonderful day to honor our veterans, and
Very much, yes.
We greatly appreciated your efforts for that day. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Yes, go right ahead, Council Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I have to wish a happy birthday to my daughter Lexi, who's turning eight later on this week. She recently got braces. She's finishing up the school year, and she's becoming more and more interested in what we do, and I know she's watching at home. I think recently I posted a picture online that she drew specifically every one of us here at the council table, and indicated what you all looked like. So, maybe I'll bring that or post that or make sure you get that. I love some detail. We like the detail.
Was I running in at the last minute?
Something like that. There's a blur in the front. I don't know what it was. But, happy birthday, Lexi. We love you.
Think of all the money we'll save on the photographer. That won't have to take our photos anymore. I'm teasing. Councilwoman McIntyre was next, then Councilwoman White, Councilwoman Meakin.
Let me just take a quick one, then she wants to go last.
Oh, pardon me, okay.
I usually can't compete with my colleagues for birthday wishes, but this past week I had two in my family. My son Brendan turned 21. We're very proud of him. And my wife also had a birthday, but we won't mention how old she was.
Very wise.
Wish them both a happy birthday.
Yes. Great. Who wants to go next? I'm...
I would, and I would like to take this opportunity to wish my mother a very happy birthday. Her birthday is tomorrow. She's not turning eight. I'm not going to say what age she is, nor does she have braces, but she no longer lives in Livonia, but she spent most of her life living in Livonia, and she's a wonderful mother, and just wishing her a great day tomorrow. And she has a lot of friends in Livonia.
That's right.
Happy birthday, Mom.
Barbara, right?
Barbara.
Barbara, yes, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one other issue.
Sure, go ahead.
Actually, just a quick recognition. Over the weekend, and we talk about how there's, every weekend, there's something to do in the city, and usually multiple things, as we just heard. We sometimes have two cultural events in one day, but on Thursday night, a number of us had the opportunity to be at the ribbon cutting for the St. Mary Michigan Fun Festival, and that's a great event for the community. Those folks, as all the groups in Livonia who put on festivals like that, work so hard. It was a lovely evening. My husband and I ventured back Saturday. There was a lot of rain, but it really didn't deter the spirits of the people who were there, so congratulations to them on a great event. And also on Saturday, another thing that a number of us had a chance to be present for, and some even participated, kind of, was the Livonia Save Our Youth 5K. And again, you know, so many hardworking volunteers, Karen Banana, who runs the organization, but then we had the Green Leaf Commission there, the police were there, just many, many organizations who came together to, and the mayor was there and I think handed out some awards. So, congratulations to everyone who's involved in those, and thank you for the things you do for our community. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman White finally.
Yes. Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, which as you all know, we are members of, and they handle risk management issues and insurance for us, they do a newsletter periodically, and in the one for this month, there was mention of a GPS-based phone application known as Waze, which helps drivers with traffic and road conditions. Many of you might have that. I know I've had it for a while. But it's now been extended to use by first responder agencies to notify drivers that an emergency vehicle is approaching. It's used in connection with a system known as heedful audio alert system, which is actually on the first responder vehicles. And Charlotte, North Carolina is using this, but now there's some fire departments in the state of Michigan that are using it. Grand Rapids is one. And with permission of the council, I'd like to refer this subject to the chief, our fire chief, to see if he's got any thoughts on it and whether or not that would be something maybe Livonia could get into. It's designed to minimize accidents between emergency responding vehicles and other fires on the roadway, and I think if we could use it, it'd be great.
Support.
Excellent, yes. Anybody have a problem? No? Go right ahead, Councilman Barr.
Are you done, Kathy? Okay.
We don't need discussion real quick?
Well, if there's discussion on it, but you need to, there's a motion. I'm on a different item, so let's wrap that up.
Oh, it's not for the item? Okay, then we do need to vote on it. Madam Clerk, would you take the role on the motion unless anybody from the audience would like to speak on that? Hearing and seeing no one, go right ahead.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Councilwoman White. Fantastic idea. Thank you. Councilmember Barr?
Madam President, just wanted to share, Livonia citizen and a friend of mine emailed me last week, and something that happened that I wanted to share with the community because it's worthy of recognition. We often talk about our first responders. This is a story about first responders, but includes more than just police and fire. It includes some of our citizens. There was in the Castle Gardens neighborhood, as I understand it, last week, a man who had a heart attack while mowing his lawn in his backyard, and some citizens who were driving by saw it, got out of the car, went and administered CPR and dialed 911. Unfortunately, he did pass away, and our first responders got there and took care of the situation. But not only wanted to acknowledge those citizens, and I don't know who they are, so if you're out there, if you're out there watching, we want to thank you, but here's something that's really cool. This friend of mine wanted it made known to the community that the Livonia Police Department, those that were there, after everything was taken care of, stuck around and finished mowing the lawn, so the family wouldn't have to worry about it. So, he sent me an email and just said, you know, "So often we don't hear about these stories," and he says, "This seems like something that deserves acknowledgement." And so, I just wanted to publicly share that with the community. I thought it was pretty special, and Ed, thanks for the tip on that, and to those who might be watching, I actually mentioned to Chief Cade. He was aware of the situation, but was not aware of the extra gesture that his officers had done in mowing the lawn and was going to say something to them as well, but we can all be thankful for the people in our community who are taking care of each other.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move now and introduce our department heads, and to my left is Todd Solinsik. Todd is our chief city engineer and does a wonderful job, as well as Mark Terramina, who is our city planner and does economic development, and he does a superior job as well. To his right is Judy Preby, who is our legislative director and has to put up with seven of us and does an excellent job at that. To my right is Eric Goldstein, who's in for Paul Bernier tonight, but Eric is right on top of everything and does a superior job as well. Thank you, Eric. And also Susan Nash, who is our city clerk. Thank you, Susan, for all you do as well. And our mayor, Dennis Wright, and our finance director, I see out there, Mike Slater, and several other department heads that will join us shortly. So, thank you all for being here, and we want to remind the council that there's new data under Item 4 and 15. And now we'll turn to audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak to the council in any manner that is not included on the green agenda, which is this agenda for this evening, if you'd approach a podium to my left or to my right, we'd appreciate it. Thank you, and give us your name and address. Hi, Mrs. Klein.
Nancy Klein, 33373 Myrna Court. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here speaking for my subdivision. I am president of the subdivision and board members. I'm concerned about the beauty of Livonia and the homeowners' association. Without our homeowners' associations, your city, our city, would not look the way it is. When you go past those subdivisions and you see those entrances, those are kept up by individuals that pay every year beyond their taxes, so that your city looks beautiful. You, as a city, also has rules. You have ordinances. We have bylaws. Those bylaws for Wood Creek Farms were registered with Wayne County in 1965. We have some people who have the mindset that you can come in and you can do whatever you want to do, but the rules are for everybody else but us. We have a fence issue now. We now have a first privacy fence that looks like a fort through our subdivision. First one. My concern is, it should be majority rules. Not one person changes all the rules. I don't care if it's the Pledge of Allegiance. It's called majority rules. Now, going back to our subdivision, we have bylaws that say no fence. When someone would come to the city ordinance department and ask for a permit for a fence, they would say, "Do you belong to a homeowners' association?" If they said yes or checked off that box, they were not allowed or given a permit. This individual went and was denied. A week later, a fence is going up. The legal department has changed that ruling because they are not going to support the homeowners' associations anymore. Shame on them. It will change the look of our subdivision. It will set a precedent for anyone else that wants to come in now and build a fence. So, now we have to, according to the inspection department, as a homeowners' association, fork out the money, $285 an hour, to have a lawyer. I want you to know that front at Wood Creek Farms, I have done 18 bags of mulch many times by myself. I take pride in my community. This should be a marriage between you people and the homeowners' associations. That doesn't seem to be going on play anymore, and it's very disturbing. Our neighbors want this fence issue not to happen again, so now we also have to change the bylaws. We would thought, well, this will never happen. It's a different mindset nowadays, and yes, it did happen. So, that is what we are dealing with, and I want to make sure that every other homeowners' association throughout Livonia is now going to be facing this issue of, you're on your own, we're not going to support you. There no longer is a more a marriage. It's a divorce between the inspectors department and the homeowners' association. By the way, that front entrance at Wood Creek Farms, which is the jewel, I can show you my arm that's all beat up because I was trimming the hedges out there the other day. I'm 72 years old. That cost $3,500 to maintain that. That is from our homeowners' association. We get no help from the city on that. That's for water, grass cutting, fertilizing, because we care, and we want our subdivision, like all the other homeowners' associations
Madam President.
to continue. Thank you.
Mrs. Klein, before you leave, there's a couple comments that people would like to make. I only want to share with you that Judy Preby, our legislative director, is trying to get a hold. Our one city attorney that we're dealing with will be back next week, and we're going to schedule a meeting on that. So, she's well aware of that, and I've shared that with her after your phone call, so just so you know.
The only problem is, we have a fence, and it's a privacy fence, and it looks like a fort. So, actually, if it does go back to it, however it changes, we're still dealing with $285 an hour to hopefully get this thing, and then now we have to change all of our bylaws to update. So, I appreciate that, but
Sure.
the fence is already up.
Okay, hang in there. All right, Councilman Meakin? Be right with you, Mr. Davis.
I have nothing, ma'am.
Oh, sorry, Council Vice President Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. Ma'am, first of all, I'll respond by saying two things here. This council and the city specifically, with the support of the mayor recently, the last couple of years, we have developed a neighborhood grant program to assist specifically with things like you just mentioned in terms of updating and keeping the front entrances nice.
I've already filled it out. Thank you.
Okay. Glad to hear that. Secondly, I think although I can understand that you're, you know, upset and frustrated at the situation, there is a difference between public law and private law. As an attorney, I have represented homeowners' associations. I've also represented residents who live in homeowners' associations. Your bylaws are largely a contract between you as an organization and the people who live there. It's not, in my opinion, and I think probably the law department opinion from what I'm understanding here, it's not the city's place to enforce your legal obligations in a private contract. So, as Madam President indicated, she is going to follow through with our city attorney in regards to this, but it's not as direct of a situation as you've indicated from a city's perspective.
I understand, but this is something that they have been doing for a long, long time. If you're a part of a homeowners' association, you don't get this. Now, I don't know if this particular person did a bunch of huffing and puffing, someone gave in, I don't know, but you know what? They met the wolf. The fence is coming down.
See for the comments.
They never did that before.
Okay, thank you. Was, who was next? Were you next, or was this gentleman next? Mr. Davis next, or were you next? He said, "Go ahead." Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
Just one second. Yes, go ahead.
I just want to, as an attorney also, and a longtime city attorney, the fact that the law department can't go into court on behalf of a homeowners' association, there's nothing new about that. It's been established law for years and years. The first thing the court wants to know when you go into court as an attorney is, do you have standing? We do not, as a municipality, have standing to represent individual property owners who have homeowners' association bylaws that may not be being followed by one particular property owner within that subdivision. And it is not new. I have been with the city for over 30 years, and I don't know of any situation where we've ever gone to court on behalf of a homeowners' association.
I'm not saying go to court. I'm talking about this permit.
Hold on one minute. Mrs. Klein, hold. Mrs. Klein? Okay, hold on one second. Let Councilwoman finish. Go right ahead.
That, I'm finished in terms of the legal aspect of this.
Aspect, okay. Was there something else you wanted to say? I don't, we don't need to have a debate here tonight, but if there was something else you wanted to add? Okay.
I'm just not sure why the permit was given, because it had never been. If you're a homeowners' association, right away, the inspector department would always say, "No, I'm sorry, we will not give you a permit." And all of a sudden, a week later, the fence is up.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Kathy, I'm sorry, I have a bad cold. My name is Kathy Pilger. I live at 19170 Augusta Court. How many of you have dogs?
Oh, right here. Ms. Pilger, you got to kind of address us, okay?
I'm looking around.
We have dogs. Some of us do, yes. And cats, too.
Basically, I'm here because I want to let, I'm trying to get the word out about a small fundraiser that I'm doing.
Oh, great, okay.
My son is a veterinary student at Ohio State University. He serves on a number of boards at the university, and one of the ones that he serves on is called Buckeyes for Greyhounds. The greyhounds that are still racing, and the Florida law still goes for another year and a half before they have to remove the greyhounds. West Virginia still is racing greyhounds. Pretty much every race, a greyhound is injured. Usually, they break a leg on the right side. The ones that are severely injured are flown into Ohio State, and they do their best to save them. My son is the secretary of the organization, so he is responsible for tracking the greyhounds from the moment they enter the state of Ohio until they are adopted. My son is in need of old leashes, old collars, old harnesses, any size. We're not looking for new stuff. We're looking for old stuff. So, summer's here, people are probably getting new leashes for their dogs to go walking the 65 parks that Livonia has. So, if you have old leashes or old collars and you're willing to donate them, we can use them all. The ones that are smaller sizes are taken to other rescues and traded for the equipment that the greyhounds need, because when the greyhounds come off the racetrack and they are finally healing, they actually don't know how to be dogs. They don't know their names, they don't know how to walk, they don't even know how to eat. We had a foster greyhound over the winter, so we had to teach her how to actually be a real dog.
And where do they take those, Ms. Pilger? Where do they, where do they take?
I have four locations set up right now, and I'm working on more. I'll be posting it on All Things Livonia. The Blue Plate is one of my locations for dropping off leashes and collars. Dogs Bow Wow on Seven Mile Road as well. Kern's Brothers is partnering with us. They're in Plymouth. And Colonial Vet in Plymouth also. But if people message me through All Things Livonia or just on Facebook, I will make arrangements to come pick them up, because we need lots and lots. Training a greyhound, they go through a lot of leashes and collars. They don't know how to walk, so they have to, it takes a lot of training, a lot of leashes, a lot of collars, so
That's right.
Anything that you can do to, you know, anybody has that old stuff gathering dust in their house, we will gratefully take it. It will all get used by either the Buckeyes for Greyhounds or another animal rescue society. We will make arrangements. Thank you very much for letting me get the word out there.
Sure. Thank you very much. If you need another location, use my store. I'd be happy to. Colleen will be happy to take those for you, too. That's all right. And anyone else on the council want to donate their house, they're more than welcome. I'm joking with them.
I was going to ask my dog. I didn't know where this was going. I was going to say, you know.
That's great. Good job. Okay. Mr. Davis, do you want to go next, or would you? Okay, go right ahead.
Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Jim Davis, and as many of you may or may not know, I'm running for city council. I'm a retired deputy chief from the Wayne County Sheriff's Office. I've spent 30 years there. I'm an instructor at Wayne State University, and I'm prepared to serve on this body. I did have one question for Madam President. If this is the 8,174th meeting, I have a lot of catching up to do.
She can fill you in. She's going to have most of them.
Thank you so much.
I was here when they rang up. No, never mind. Oh, your address, Mr. Davis, please.
Thank you very much.
That's all right. Your address in Livonia there?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 29807 Oakley.
Thank you. Well, thank you for coming in, and thank you for running for office. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, next, are you running, too? No. Okay.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
My name is Kelly Dobson.
Hi, Kelly.
And I live at 9103 Sunbury. I'm just going to read from my little script here. Good evening. My name is Kelly Dobson. I'm a wife, a mother of three adult children, and a grandmother to one grandson. I'm a professional commercial photographer. My husband is an engineer at Ford Motor Company. I am here tonight to talk about an issue my family has been dealing with for about two years now. About a year and a half ago, my neighbor next door decided to become a marijuana grower, and from what I can tell, he's using a good portion of his house, if not all of it. And from what I can tell, he's using a good portion of his house, if not all of it. Sadly, the state of Michigan has legalized marijuana without putting in any regulations. And without any sort of regulations or rules, we citizens are sort of forced to deal with the consequences. And I'm here to, tonight, to discuss some of those consequences we've been dealing with. First one, the smell and air quality. The smell that emits from the house next door is nothing, nothing short of suffocating. There is always a strong skunk-like smell in the air around the house, which directly blows into my living room, which forces me to close my windows daily. In addition to the smell, we have a concern over the quality of air and what's blowing into our house. We don't know what he's using to fertilize these plants, or how that's being dealt with, and how it's being admitted into the air. Secondly, marijuana being a cash-only business, the other major concern is the crime that usually accompanies an all-cash enterprise. Our neighbor's house is surrounded by families with small children. Safety is of great concern, as we now have heavier traffic from people coming and going. And always, in the back of my mind is a concern of people robbing him, or accidentally robbing my house, or police raiding his house, or accidentally raiding my house. It's always been a nice, quiet, safe neighborhood, but I don't see how that can continue with a grow house right next door. Third issue is resale-ability. If nothing is done, I don't see us staying here. But I have to ask, how am I supposed to sell my house when you walk up my driveway and the first thing you smell is marijuana? It's not a selling feature. Fourthly, how do I explain this smell and this activity to a five-year-old grandson who comes to visit? This is a conversation that I'm not prepared to have with a five-year-old. He, he needs to stay innocent. These are just a few of the concerns I have and consequences that have been forced upon us. I'm not here to debate the medical use of marijuana, I understand that it does have medicinal uses. But I know that my neighbor's clients are not all cancer patients. I've seen his Facebook page, and he is not the benevolent user of home remedies. He is, he's, he's running a business. I'm here to ask this council to address these issues. The fact is, is this type of business absolutely does not belong in our resident neighborhoods. And I'll say it again, it does not belong where we live. Recently, I reached out to a number of the council members, as, as well as a few who are running for the board, to vent my frustration. But the overwhelming response I got was to contact the police, which is all fine and good, but their hands are as tight as mine. These growers know the law, chapter and verse, and they know the gaping holes in the law and how to exploit them.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hold on one second. There's a couple council members that want to speak on this.
Okay.
At that point, if you would.
Sure.
And we can go back to that in a minute.
I'm pretty well done at that point.
Okay. Okay, we appreciate you coming in, and I know you have some health issues, too, that this doesn't happen.
Yeah, I have asthma, so it easily triggers an asthma attack.
Okay, all right. Councilman Meakin.
Thank you, Madam President. We have seen your emails and have passed them along to the police department. Chief Cade is well aware of your situation, and we did just raided a grow facility last year. So there is hope for they'll do their job, but with the restrictions, it, it's gonna take some time. But we are on, and I know the police department will take this very seriously.
And I appreciate that they are, and they've always been very supportive. However, I think their hands are, you know, they're really not able to do a whole lot at this point.
They can do more than you think.
Okay, were you done? Okay, Councilwoman McIntyre, then Council Vice President Jolly.
I appreciate your coming in this evening, Ms. Dobson, and you and I had corresponded on the issue. And I told you in our email exchange, I worked very hard on the opposition to this ballot initiative, and I had many, many concerns with it. And I worked, got a lot of good information from our police department, other law enforcement agencies, medical personnel. One of the, I had a lot of concerns at the personal level for our children, more impaired drivers, you know, just a lot of things. But one of the concerns I had as an elected representative in this city is this ballot initiative, which, as you know, unfortunately, in my view, was passed by the majority of voters. It ties the hands of local communities, because there, there are areas where state law takes precedence. Marijuana is sadly one of those, liquor regulation, alcohol laws, firearm laws, some traffic laws. Local municipalities have no legal ability to act. And we are waiting for direction, and, and Mr. Goldstein, please, you know, correct anything I'm saying that's, that's not perfectly correct. But we are waiting for guidance from the legislature. And as you probably know from your conversations with the police, up to seventy-two plants. That's a lot of plants. And there's, there's the possibility that you can exceed that legally with the ambiguity in the ballot language. And while we are working hard on this issue, we, as, as you heard from multiple people, our, our police department looks for any opportunity where there's a clear violation of the law to act. Unfortunately, because of the way this was written, and the municipalities' inability to further regulate or regist, or, or regulate, we can't, we can't do anything. So what I would suggest that you do is make a lot of noise with the state legislators, too. And let them know that communities need guidance from Lansing. And sharing your stories, and helping them understand that, that the guidances, that the guidances that I think many citizens, certainly you are looking for, are to be very clear and, and more restrictive, right, on what can be done. But we, we just, we, we feel for you, and we know, we know that this is going on in our city.
I'm prepared to make a lot of noise.
Good, good. And we appreciate your coming tonight, and getting, getting more people to understand, and more people to understand the ramifications of this ballot initiative, I think is important, because it was, the ballot language itself was not clear. And it's left everyone with a lot of ambiguity. And it's left municipalities and police departments with the great frustration of not being able to help you. So my...
Yeah, I will, I will be making as much noise as I can, and I will be reaching out to my state rep.
Good.
And your state senator.
And the governor's, and the governor's office.
And my state senator.
And the governor.
And the attorney, and the Attorney General.
And the SOS, and all those nice people.
Thank you, but please stay in touch with us.
Yeah, I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Hang in there, Council, you're welcome. Council Vice President Jolly has a comment.
I was just gonna add two things. As a council, when this all came up, I think we were one of the public bodies who spoke out against the ballot initiative initially, and then as soon as it passed, with the guidance of our law department and the administration as well, we were one of the first communities to opt out, to avoid a lot of the things. But unfortunately, there are limitations to what that is.
You know, honestly, I'd be fine.
You, I'm not trying to be rude, you're not supposed to speak when you're there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me, if you don't mind, let me just finish, too.
I'd be fine with the stores.
Hold on one second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Let him finish speaking, then we'll go back.
And I was gonna say, you bringing it closer to home, state legislature, obviously. Your state representative lives here in Livonia, your state senator lives here in Livonia. They should fight this battle for you, and at least express your, your viewpoints. And it says, I know state legislature was mentioned, they're literally, they should be your neighbors as well, so they should kind of have an understanding of what you're going through, and be able to come out and look at the house and stuff like that as well, okay? But that's where the real power is in this, is the city. We've done everything we can. The police will use their policing powers to the best of their ability to resolve situations. But in terms of any kind of changes, we don't have that power. Okay? Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman, or, excuse me.
I'd just add one more brief comment. First of all, you were on point and well-stated with everything you said, thanks.
Thanks.
It was, it was mentioned earlier, the other home where we had the raid in the city. I think it's important to understand that that was a situation where we had evidence, where our police department had evidence, that they were exceeding the allowable amounts. What you're talking about, presumably, I think some of the details are still being ironed out, what you're talking about is a home where they're not exceeding the allowable amounts. And I think it's important for us to understand that. I'm, I'm adding this to what's been said already, is that that's the problem. The thing you're dealing with, which none of us would want in our neighborhood, and it's gonna happen more and more, is within the way the law has been written. That's a huge problem. And it's gonna happen more and more and more, and we saw, before this ever even happened, we had the experience of Colorado, we had people come in from Colorado and talk to us here in Livonia, about big, beautiful homes that had been gutted and turned into marijuana grow operations. And it's happening in this city right now, I guarantee, more than what we even realize. So I just wanted to make that point, that, you know, the, the place where there was the raid was a place that was exceeding the limits. We're talking about places that are not exceeding the limits, and it's a problem. And so please make a lot of noise, and anybody out there that has this happening in your neighborhood, you need to make, you need to make the noise, too. Come use this podium, but yes, talk to your state reps, talk to your state senators. We have unleashed a Pandora's box in this state, and the costs of that are just, we're just getting at the very tip of what we're gonna be seeing from that. So I appreciate your commitment to this.
And if the smell is from just the allotted number, I can't even imagine if, if he's over the limit, how much worse it would get.
Kelly, if I recall correctly, the people don't even live in the house, is that correct?
I have deep suspicions that they don't live there.
But they pay taxes on the house? I wonder if the taxes are current and all that good stuff?
I wouldn't know.
I'd like that to be checked out, if we could, to check the taxes and the water bill, and all that good stuff on that particular address. See who owns that home, and what's go, you know, let's get a little deeper into it, and keep our phone numbers, please.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
I just want you to know you have a lot of sympathetic ears here, up here at the council. Our chief of police tried very hard to get the word out, and had a forum, as Councilman Barr indicated, where law enforcement from Colorado, which has had the law in place the longest, came in and told their horror stories. And, and listening to what you had to say, it's exactly what they were saying coming true in our community. So it's extremely disheartening to all of us up here, and please, yes, make that noise to your state legislators, and the governor, and anybody who, who is up at that level that can do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Next.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
I should sesh.
That's all right, feels like it. Your name and address, please.
My name is Deb Trelor. I'm at one eight seven oh one Dearing.
Okay, Deb.
For a number of years, about nine, someone comes and goes for my residence. They stole what they want. Now they've analyzed my personal property along with the house itself. I've tried to file police reports to no avail. I tried to talk to the chief of police, but the police at the patrol desk say I cannot. I've tried to call the mayor, but the mayor refuses to return my call. The police department, the mayor, do not seem to care about crimes that are being committed in the city. I am now coming to the council on advice that I have received. I have witnesses that see someone come and go when I go to work. Eyewitnesses the police have not even talked to. I have pictures of damages. This person or persons put semen on some of my clothing, just to mention some of the The police officers that come tell me there's nothing they can do because no crimes have been committed. No crimes have been committed. I'm not even an attorney. But there's trespassing, illegal entering, theft, damage to the building, along with personal property, probably to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars. Semen on clothing, I always thought was a sex crime. I hope I'm wrong, but it seems to me that people that I've talked to in the department may be covering for some felon or felons. I don't know if it's someone in the police department, a family member, maybe a friend of the police department. Most police departments would love eyewitnesses, photos, semen, anything. I would like to know why Livonia does not. I would like the state police to investigate this crime, to put the criminal and criminals in jail where they belong, replace and fix what was stolen and damaged. I know the state police will, I've talked to them. But they need permission in order to do this. It's a territorial thing. I do know that the mayor is responsible for the police department. Is there anything the council can do? Maybe overrule the mayor, so justice can finally be served, and find out who is behind all this. I want to thank you for your time, and if there's anything you can do to help to get justice, I would appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to address the council, so we can get into our regular meeting, because we do have an eight o'clock meeting as well? Thank you, everyone that participated. We are, right now, we have the reports from the mayor and other city officials, communication with the Department of Finance dated April twenty-sixth of this year, retirement system annual report, fiscal year two thousand eighteen, is submitted in pursuit to Public Act two oh two of two thousand seventeen, if we can receive and file that. Items one through ten, council, are listed on the consent agenda, that they will be voted on as one item. This does not mean that they are any less important than the other items on the agenda, but rather, they have been deemed non-controversial in nature. Do we have a vote on one through ten?
Some of.
Moved by Councilwoman White, supported by?
Second.
Council Vice President Jolly. Council Clerk Nash, if you would, please take the role, that'd be great.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Item eleven, council, is our finance and budget committee, our chair of that is the Honorable Scott Barr. The topic was the annual audit report. Councilman Barr.
Thank you, President Toy. Yes, people who watch these meetings know that this is an annual process for us, where each May, really, with the close of our fiscal year, and then through the winter and spring, excuse me, our city auditor is, is auditing our city finances, and then usually in mid-May, they come and meet with our finance committee to, to give the report on that audit. It's usually a meeting in which we can feel really good about our city, because we do an exceptional job on the financial management front, and I'll speak to that here a little bit. But the topic here is of that annual report for the fiscal year ending November thirty of two thousand eighteen. Livonia was given an unmodified opinion, which is the best report we can get. According to Plant Moran, the city of Livonia remains on solid financial footing, thanks to diligent management by the administration and council. Auditor Frank Audia presented, I had to put this quote in here, he's called us the gold standard in the past, but this time, he said that this meeting every year is like their Super Bowl, because of the health of the city and the engagement of the council. So that's, there's a little CPA opinion for you, but, but still, still not, something, something that you'd like to hear, that's for sure. And, and those are engaging meetings, even though there's not a whole lot to talk about as far as problems with the finances, it's, it's usually an exceptional report, but we do tend to take that time as a council to ask a lot of engaging questions, so that we can better understand the ins and outs of our city budget. Just a few of the highlights, I'm not gonna go into this in as much detail as I have sometimes in the past, but the general fund revenue was up slightly to fifty-nine million, with general fund expenditures slightly less than that, so we're living within our means. The general fund, as a percentage of expenditures, is at twenty-two point two percent, which is a very healthy position. Actually, the recommendation for municipalities is sixteen point seven percent, which, which corresponds to two months' worth of, of expenses. Ours is higher than that, but the reason for that is, and we've explained that here in the past, is because Livonia has such a great percentage of our budget that's restricted by our millages, they, they actually recommend that we have a higher percentage of our expenditures in the general fund, which we do. That the fact that we have so many of our funds restricted is actually something that is part of what keeps our city government so transparent to our residents, that you know where your tax dollars are going. The money that's raised by a library or millage goes to the library, the money that's raised by Rhodes Millage goes to the Rhodes. I forget how many millages we have, it's nine to eleven, something like that, but, but because so much of it is restricted, we need to keep more of that general fund available at a particular time for anything unforeseen. The city's defined benefit pension system is about ninety percent funded, which is down from last year. That's just as a result of investment markets. So we're gonna have to be making some additional contributions in the next couple of years to that, which we're preparing for. I'll just say again, that it's in a much, much healthier position than most other municipalities in Michigan. Our VIBA, Retirement Healthcare, is approximately sixty percent funded, we've talked about that here a number of times over the last couple of years, when calculated for funding valuations, so we're gonna have to continue to make contributions to that. And just one example of the last couple of years, when we've had some windfalls from the state on personal property tax reimbursements, we've applied that towards this fund for that reason. We're actively trying to get that up, so we can keep those promises to our retirees. And then finally, our general ledger showed zero errors out of eight thousand fifty-six entries. This is really impressive. Usually, we get kudos from the auditor for only having two or three errors from, throughout the year, that they have to fix. And this year, Mike Slater and company achieved it, they got zero, which just boggles my mind for the, the detail that they're dealing with throughout the year, so. Out of all that, the committee recommends to receive and place on file, for information of the council, the letter from Plant Moran dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Also recommend to receive and place on file, the independent auditors' report from Plant Moran dated April twenty-fifth of two thousand nineteen. Also to receive and place on file, the federal awards supplemental information from Plant Moran dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Also recommend to receive and place on file, the financial report with supplemental information dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. And then finally, to receive and place on file, the audit presentation dated November thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, from Plant Moran. This is a standing resolution, it'll remain in committee, and we close that meeting at eight o'clock.
Great job. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Any further comments on any of that? Nope? Okay.
Go through the chair, we can receive and file.
Yes, receive and file, all of that through the chair as well. Okay. Item twelve, then, council, we'll turn to that, is unfinished business, and this is a proposed amendment to Livonia Court of Ordinances Department. Petition two zero one nine zero two zero three zero two, submitted by St. Jude Investment, request to vacate existing public utilities meant located on the southeast quarter of Farmington, or, excuse me, Schoolcraft and Farmington Roads, in the northwest quarter of section twenty-seven. First reading was given by Councilman President, Vice President Jolly, Councilman Jolly.
I'll offer a second reading.
You've heard second reading? Was there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience, would the clerk please take the role in item twelve?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Item 13, council's proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance number 443 is amended from the Department of Law. This is brought to us from Leo Sylvie Building to rezone. Properties located on the west side of Farmington Road between Norfolk Avenue and Eight Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 4, from RUF Rural Urban Farm to R1, one family residential. Councilman Kritzman had given that first reading. Would there be someone that would like to give that second reading?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Meakin on second reading. Was there discussion from the council? Hearing and seeing no council member, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. We're on item 14.
Will those become effective upon publication?
Yes, they're both gonna become effective upon publication in the newspaper. Okay, excuse me. Item 14 is also from our planning commission. It's submitted by the Leo Sylvie Building to develop a planned residential development under a single-family clustering option pre-court, consisting of 16 site condominium lots on properties located on the west side of Farmington Road between Norfolk Avenue and Eight Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 4. Do I have mo, yes, direction, please?
I'll offer the approving resolution, concurring with the planning commission's recommendation.
Support.
We have support from Councilman Meakin and supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Was there discussion on this item, 14? From the council, anyone, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience as well. Madam Clerk, could you take the role on 14?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Council, we're on item 15, which again, has new data. Item 15 is a waiver petition. This is in relation to, which was submitted by KAC Livonia LLC to construct and addition, increase the number of service bays and renovate the exterior of the existing automobile and truck repair facility known as Kurtz Auto Care, located on the northeast quarter of Plymouth and Merriman Roads, in the southwest quarter of Section 26. Do I have direction?
Madam President?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I'll offer approving on this item.
Councilman Barr has offered approving, supported by Councilwoman White. Was there further discussion from the council?
Madam President?
Yes, please, go right ahead. Councilman Barr.
Oh, sorry, I thought I heard your voice. Just a comment on this. I want to thank the petitioner on his patience with this. I know he's had a long road with this, and we made it a little longer a couple of weeks ago. I think you were somewhat a victim of our respect for our architect and the council's opinion, because he had raised a question about the materials, and he wasn't here last time, and we wanted to hold off on that. Have had a chance to talk with him since. He didn't have any major issues. I've offered an approving. I will just share with you a comment he made via text right prior to this meeting, and I just want to share it. He's tied up with a work commitment. Just said, might ask about the coping at the top of the masonry walls. What, what color will it be? So, I, I've offered the approving. I don't have any major issues with this, but as you move forward this project, I wanted to share that, that comment with you. I think this is gonna be a great improvement to that corner. I think we've got a successful business here that ultimately, not only is it gonna aesthetically improve the corner, but is actually gonna improve some of the traffic flow at that corner, as far as through his business, is what I mean. So, not only aesthetically pleasing, but functionally useful as well. So, thanks.
And I believe you're here tonight, right? Raise your hand. Yeah, great. Thank you for coming back. Okay, if there's no further comments from the council, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience, Madam Clerk, will you take the vote on that?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, and I want to, Madam Clerk, if we could, under the new data, if we could receive and file those set of drawings to the new exterior materials and proposed to the northwest and the southwest views of that building, and that, those that were received by the planning commission on May 31st of 2019, and also receive and file new data, set of drawings to the new exterior materials and proposed to the northwest and southwest views of the building, received by your office, the clerk's office, on May 20th of 2019. Thank you very much. We're on to number 16. Item 16, excuse me, council, is a waiver petition brought to us from the planning commission by Players Golf and Event Center South to utilize a Class C liquor license in connection with the operation of an indoor golf and millionaire party, charity gaming facility, property located on the south side of Plymouth Road in the northeast quarter of Section 32. Do I have direction?
Madam President?
Yes, please.
I'll offer an approving resolution.
Approving resolution offered by Vice President Jolly. Do I have support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Meakin. Was there discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Just for the record, this is the second such establishment operated by these same people here in the city of Livonia. We heard from them last meeting, state that their initial attempt at this has been a great success, and they're trying to add another venue for it on the south end of town. I think it's a good idea to support our local businesses that are thriving, and I think it's a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Was there anyone else wishing, nope, anyone in the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, would the clerk please take the vote on item 16?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. We also have item, item Resolution B. Did somebody want to offer that?
Madam Chair, I'll offer Resolution B.
Yes, go right ahead.
Which would waive the thousand-foot separation requirement between existing Class C licenses.
Thank you very much. Was there support on that?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Meakin, moved by Councilwoman White. Was there further discussion from the council? Hearing and seeing no one, anyone from the audience on item 16? Hearing and seeing no one, would you please take the vote on that, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Council, we're under new business, item 17, which is an acceptance of a grant easement, brought to us from the Department of Law. Do I have direction?
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I would like to move approval of the acceptance of the grant of easement.
Thank you very much. Supported by Councilman Barr, moved by Councilwoman McIntyre. If there's further discussion from the council, seeing none, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, could the clerk take the vote on item 17?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Council, we're on item 18, which is acceptance of a grant of easement, again, brought to us from the Department of Law. Could I have direction on that?
Madam Chair, I'll offer acceptance of the grant of easement.
Thank you. Moved by Councilwoman White, supported by?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Barr on the easement. Yes, go right ahead, Councilman.
I just wanted to thank the law department for this. They did this by securing without monetary considerations. One of my favorite phrases.
Great. Good deal. Yes, great. Okay, you have heard all of that. Was there any other comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, would the clerk please take the vote on item 18?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Council, we were at, we're at the point of audience communications once again. That ends our voting agenda for this evening. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on anything that wasn't on the green agenda, please approach the podium to my left to right. You have three minutes and state your name and address. Good evening.
My name is Bill Craig. I live at 20050 Milburn. I'm here to request of city council, I would like to request a letter of support to go to the mayor's office recommending the following. Letter to Wayne County Warren Evans, subject Newburg Mill. City of Livonia does not support county effort to sell Wayne County parkland, specifically the Newburg Mill site. City of Livonia suggests using some of the $20 million this city has provided in Parks Village to make safe Newburg Mill for use of county employees. That is a simple request. I didn't want to get time to keep on going by without asking you to please consider the future of a decision of selling parkland.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jolly?
Mr. Craig, I appreciate your efforts, and I know that we've spoken about this before. I can't speak for my council colleagues up here, but the power that city council holds, as I've tried to explain and to get across to you.
Yes.
Is, is not necessarily to act necessarily in this way, but if and when a sale is proposed, if the, the new owner, or the proposed owner of the property wishes to do something other than parkland with it, they would then come before this body and request our, our consent, our approval to rezone the property for the use that they seek. That's really where the power of city council lies at this point. Knowing that, although I appreciate the efforts, and I'm as curious as anybody else to know what's going on there, and I think ultimately, we would like to see some of the same things. I don't want to pursue a letter at this point, and I won't be making that motion, because I believe council's power is elsewhere. But I do appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address this? Mr. Craig, have you written the mayor's office then, or no?
Pardon?
Have you asked the mayor's office for a letter?
No, I haven't asked the mayor's office for a letter.
Okay, I just wondered.
I came to you first.
Okay.
I, certainly, I'm gonna ask the mayor's office for that letter. I just wanted to make sure that I asked out in the public arena, because the actions of Wayne County Executive are kind of closed. Nobody knows, nobody knows what's going on, or they say they don't know what's going on. Yet, there's gonna be a meeting at the Livonia Rec Center on Thursday to discuss the bidders for the property. I'm more concerned that there won't be any opportunity to modify the decision, once, once a proposal is made. They're trying to draw in the city of Livonia to get their acknowledgement and get their okay to move forward, to go to Wayne County Commission, to get the final approval of the parkland. I don't want to have to come back here later on, when, when you're deciding what to do with that property, to keep it parkland, or, or to make it a bar. I just wanted to get out in the open and ahead of the curve.
We, if I recall correctly, and Judy, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this whole manner for the council, 'cause we had sent it back when Mrs., or Commissioner Webb and Commissioner Anderson came in, and the commission itself was supposed to look at it and decide about it, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, members? I, I'm trying to recall that meeting, and I think we threw it in the committee of the hole, if I'm not mistaken. Go right ahead, Councilman. Yes.
That's, that's what we did. What the request had been initially, when this first came before us, they just simply requested that we put it in a committee, so that they could have an opportunity to come in and present, and, and to present the issue to us. We had, at that point, not had anything formally presented to us. So, so, and that's what we did, is we put it in the committee to have that meeting. I will say, and Mr. Craig and I had talked as well, although now that I think about, we haven't talked since that phone call, and we probably should. But the, there, there was an opportunity, we ended up not having that committee meeting, because then an opportunity arose for, we were all invited to go to Newburg Mill to see the site. I'll tell you, as somebody that's lived in Livonia all my life, I hardly knew Newburg Mill was there. I've passed by that, who knows how many times in my life, and I hardly knew. And it was, it was eye-opening in a wonderful way to go in there and see what is there. And I'll just say, whatever ends up happening with this, and, and Mr. Craig, you and I have talked about this, and I've told you that if, and Mr. Jolly was spot on with what he said as to where our power is, if this ever comes before us with, for anything for us to consider, the principle that I'll be working with is, whatever happens with that site, it needs to be something that has the preservation of those mills at its core. I will say, as a Livoni resident, to get an opportunity to go in and see what, what, there is a gem there that I never knew about, and to think that there's some alternatives out there that could make that available to people that never knew it existed, I'm all ears to listen to some of those things. But it all has to be with that principle at the core of preserving the historical nature of that, of that mill, and I think there's a number of ways to do that. But as Mr. Jolly said, that, that's my opinion, but as far as any action we can take, there's nothing we can do at this point. It's not in our hands.
Okay. I appreciate that. I, I just wanted to get it out in the open. I made my ask. You gave me a good explanation, and I'm satisfied. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Thank you. Okay. Was there anyone else that would like to address the council in any manner, that was or not? I need a motion.
Or move to adjourn?
Moved to adjourn by Councilwoman McIntyre, supported by Council Vice President Jolly. Show seven, or six, we adjourn. About 10 minutes, if you could.